Show those briefly, but no substantial changes to Inspiration Elementary update. Would just note in terms of our staffing timeline, you'll see at our next meeting we'll bring forward the recommendation for additional positions that will certainly include Inspiration Elementary. Some of those positions are also included within your respective five-year plan. Budget process continues here through March. We'll approve those new staffing positions. Preliminary capital outlay budget, again, that's the big ticket item. To note, it's not working.
It's working.
Preliminary budget in May, public hearing in July. Couple items to note, COVID-19 pandemic response plan, no changes for quarter three. We're anticipating no changes to quarter four specifically, but administratively, we have started to have some conversations about summer programming and what exactly that looks like. I would tell you that it is a priority of the administration to make certain that our students' summer activities are able to be had. Not necessarily the outside organization stuff, but our students, the summer open gyms, team camps, fine art rehearsals, those types of things continue. That's our priority at this point in time. Kindergarten screening, obviously, registration is open. Contact your respective elementary for other information. School board election, two seats, both three-year terms. Earliest date to circulate a petition is April 6th. Contact the business office for more information. Superintendent evaluation, the evaluation document and tool is due to President Allum today, so please get that to her either in hard copy or by electronic format. Teacher negotiations, the timeline has been established March 10th. We'll have our initial meeting with the BVA and then the 24th marks negotiations. Hope to ratify the contract on April 12th. That's of course, subject to completed negotiations and all of those other necessary items. Legislative update, just want to note Senate Bill 177 is a bit of a topic at this point in time. The topic is to revise the provisions of parental choice regarding compulsory school attendance and matters. Connected to that, I can tell you that there's a variety of things included in that. It's surrounding homeschool and requirements associated with homeschool. What I can tell you is that we as a district support families that choose to homeschool and do so in a quality manner. We believe they have the ability and the right to do that. What I would say is that we have a two-class enrollment requirement in order to participate in extracurricular activities. And to make it as simple as possible, the mechanism for funding general education, or the way we pay coaches and directors and those folks that lead those extracurricular activities is through ultimately student enrollment. That's what garners you your funding. So if they're not enrolled at all, you garner no dollars, which doesn't allow you to fund the programs in which they're attending. So that's really been our position and our standpoint. We have some concerns about the bill and we would voice those concerns in a respectful manner and hope to get a no vote on Senate Bill 177 unless some things change. There's always potential for amendments, but in its current state, we are opposed. Just an item to note that that's kind of a hot topic in here at the moment. Associated school boards, school administrators and large group provide us resources. Again, if you're really interested in any of those items, I'd suggest you go out and check out the bill tracker. There are far too many bills to be an expert on all of them, so if you're interested in knowing more, those are great resources to utilize. Couple calendar items to note, conferences, March 15th and 16th, they will be virtual. We've communicated that to our administrative team and then they will work through their process of communicating that to parents and those respective processes associated with virtual conferences. School will be in session on March 18th and there is no school on March 19th for the comp day. This is just a picture of the principal's office at Inspiration Elementary. So as you can see, what we're looking at here is we're looking at an office that has been sheet rocked, taped, textured, and it's got a coat of primer on it. So that's the current status of the office area. They're going to start putting in ceiling grid here shortly and then follow the areas around as they get those various areas taped, textured, rocked and painted. This is a look at the Inspiration Elementary teacher workroom. So if you can imagine what it'll look like, you can see that there will likely be an area for teachers to sit, enjoy their lunch, and then there will be cabinets and whatnot, casework put in, and then there are two family restrooms there and the teachers lounge. Again, same status as the elementary principal's office. This would be the status of the elementary kindergarten wing. So if you look at our blueprint, you can see that there's a JK kindergarten wing and then grades one through four are in a different wing. Again, same general status as far as that goes, taped, textured, coat of paint. This is the Inspiration Elementary for grades one through four wing. I would tell you that it might be sheet rocked by now because I took the pictures last week and they were starting to work through that process here. So you can see that there's still work ongoing there in that wing. We are beginning to schedule things like playground install, beginning to schedule things like furniture, the timeframe and for furniture to show up and smart birds to get installed and all of those various things associated with the construction progress project. So with that being said, anyone that's interested in a tour sometime between now and the end of May, feel free to reach out and we can set up a walkthrough and take a look at it. The entire interior has concrete poured in it. Almost all of the interior is decked out as far as roofing goes. The media center is being finished here this week and then the commons area is actually the last thing they're going to deck out. That'll be open for a little bit while, a little while longer. But again, if you're interested in a tour, feel free to reach out. Let me know. We'll go from there. Certainly entertain. Any questions
Thank you very much Superintendent Larson. Board policy, there is none tonight. So that takes us to our general business section, the presentation of the Brandon Valley School District five-year plan for 2021 to 2026.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I turn it over to Business Manager Lundberg, I do want to extend a special thank you to our building administration. They spend a tremendous amount of time working through their specific building and department situation to provide us with a detailed overview on what their needs are for not only next year, but years to come. So we certainly appreciate their hard work and their effort that go into the five-year plan. And then I also just want to extend a special thank you to Business Manager Lundberg and the business office for the completion of the various fund projections over the course of the five years. I believe this provides the board and the public with a tremendous overview in terms of how we're going to manage not only next year, but future years. Mr. Lundberg has an incredible skill and talent for being able to take the generalizations I throw at him and put them into this outstanding financial document. So without any further comment, certainly we turn it over to Mr. Lundberg for review of the revenues.
Perfect. Thank you, Jared. If I can, I'm just going to take 30 seconds. Personal privilege here. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to serve as the mayor the last two and a half years. As you probably know, I've since resigned that position. True and form, I told you two and a half years ago, if it ever interfered with this job, this job is my baby. And so I didn't like the way it was going, so that's what I did and that's what I felt I needed to do. Thank you, though. Appreciate it. With that and the five-year plan, everything I've always told you, this document to me is the most important document for you as a school board to utilize. It's more important than the annual budget because it looks out five years rather than just one year. And I always preached to you guys that decisions you make today affect down the road, year two through five. And that's why it's so important to look five years down the road. And it's not as large as the budget book, but there's a lot of data in here that I think is more important to you as a school board member than a one-year budget. These diagonal things are hard to breathe in these masks. The first, it's divided into four sections, four projections, the capital outlay, the general fund, special education fund and the enrollments. I'll kind of hit on each section real quickly. Again, a lot of you have seen this multiple times, so my presentation isn't varying too much. It does, the numbers do change, but the actual presentation doesn't vary too much. The capital outlay is the major equipment and building need fund. As you can see on the first page there of the summary information, there's a lot of things that we have to buy each year. I consider them 10 things that we always buy, no matter what. We buy textbooks, we pay debt, we buy buses, we buy technology. Those are all included in the red there in that middle section of the capital outlay fund projection. Speaking of debt, I think we've done a very, very good job in minimizing the amount of debt issued. We've always waited to be able to pay cash for things. As you can see, our only debt service in the capital outlay fund is $550,000. And that's a small portion of the intermediate school. So it's a very minimal number of our debt service there. Managing the cash or the cash flow to be able to pay cash for projects is evidenced by not next year, but the following year, we have paid in $7 million for a fairly extensive high school addition. I'm very proud of that fact that we can do that whole thing and just pay cash and not have to issue any debt. That's '22, '23 school year. We'll probably start the tail end of the '21, '22 school year, start the whole process, but it'll basically be paid for in '22, '23. All cash, no debt. If I can just back up, I guess the first column here is the current year that we're right in right now, and then the next five are the subsequent five years. Speaking of debt, if I can, on the last year here, fairly unique situation that we have never been in in a long time here in Brandon Valley. We did, we have had more debt in the capital outlay fund in previous years. That has been predicated in the fact that we needed to issue that because bond issue just wasn't passing or whatnot, so they issued debt. Our growth in valuations is becoming, if it continues the way it is, we're going to have the unique ability to, up to you, but we're going to have the potential to do in our next building project, I foresee, out of capital outlay funds. The potential will be there. Now that's, I know there's some things that I've always been a proponent of going to bond issues and we've been very successful with those. But it's an opportunity for you to build that project out of current tax funds that are taxed. So that'll be a decision you'll have to make down the road '25, '26 school year. I have $1.6 million in there and still have quite a bit of ample supply of cash going through there. Something to just to note, right now, debt service for a school 20 years, each million dollars would cost you about $75,000 a year. I like to have those little earmarks for you to kind of go by. So 75,000, you could build a $15 million school for about 1.1 million annual debt, 20 years. Something to look at down the road. Each year, there's about a million dollars in tech purchases, you'll see, replacement, new, one-to-one initiatives as they go through here, million to 1.2 million, up on average, a million bucks just in technology purchases. A big part of the capital outlay fund is the systematic and prudent use of fund balance. If you just drop down just a little bit, Jared, I don't know if it enables you to, yeah, that you're in fund balance. As you can tell, and as we've been talking about for the last couple of years, we're starting to build that up. We have been building that up a number of years. We'll build it up to a, next year, it's peak of $8 million. Then we'll drop it down with the use of, or the building of that new middle, or new high school addition, I'm sorry, and then start to build it back up. So it's very key to have a systematic approach to spending that fund balance. The old Lundberg saying, this one isn't with the coaches, this is the one with the school board. People don't pay their taxes for me to put it in First National Bank at .00001%. They want the services, right? So you do need fund balance to operate a school when you're talking about 50, 60 million dollars. You do need some, but they pay their, people pay their taxes for you to give them services. So that's, I try to do the best I can possibly do on managing those fund balances and providing those services. As I told you before, we've, our valuation growth is, it's been unprecedented the last three years. I mean, we're up 10, 12% each year. Now, I am basing that on an increase of 8% throughout that five-year period. So if something goes south there, then you're not going to have as many available funds there because it's all funded by property tax, the capital outlay fund. So if we don't have that growth continuing, it's not going to be quite as flush. But I, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but I see nothing that's going to change here too drastically in the next three to five years. Can Jared just drop down the other way? I'm sorry. Yeah, oh, yeah. Each, you can see the amount that we generate by property tax, 6.1 million, 6.6 million. It's kind of an increase of about 400,000, 500,000. It looks like going up even more as the subsequent years of $600,000 a year with those growth. We're almost up to $2.5 billion of total valuation in the school district. 2.5 billion. So it's generating some real money there and we are in very good shape in that capital outlay fund. I'm very happy and I couldn't be more pleased to be able to put a $7 million addition on our high school and pay cash for it. That's something that I and you should be very proud of. Any questions on the capital outlay fund?
Just one. Everything lays out and there's fairly static to modest increases across the years, probably mostly given to growth and things that we need in each of the classrooms and the buildings. The one that shows more than modest increase is the major textbook adoptions. We go from 120 to a million and that's more than we see across anything else. Anything to note there to discuss?
Yeah, that number has just gone through the roof. In fact, we were late in getting that number into the plan and Jared called me at home. That is probably a good thing because I was able to sit down. He just about floored me on that. Next year is a language arts and language arts is always expensive. Didn't know it was a million expensive, but so then I, the following few years are pretty big ones too. I don't know the exact order, but social studies, sciences, those are all pretty expensive too. But language arts is the biggest one and that's next year. And I'm meeting with the curriculum director, I believe tomorrow, to look at that. And it may be lower than that. That's the top end of it. That's the top, top number, I believe. Correct, Jared?
Yep, absolutely. I think if you were, and I haven't, but I would be interested to know seven years ago what your ELA curriculum adoption number was and then look now, seven years down the road with your enrollment increase and the number of kids you're serving, the number of buildings you have. It's obviously a big number, but it's certainly, I think, is appropriate. ELA is certainly a big year and then math is the following year, which is also a big year.
In addition, Ellie, we had basically nothing in the current year. It was what we consider a swing year, so they buy some of the specials in there. So not much of anything in this current year, so it really jumped up. Any other questions on the capital outlay fund? If not, I'll move into the operating fund, the general fund. It's the major operating fund of the district, the largest fund. Just real quickly on how the spreadsheet works here, this is the current year, the far left-hand column, this is our current budget. I have not adjusted any of the budget numbers. I've kept them, let's say coronavirus-free. I have not put in coronavirus numbers in there just to try to ease the confusion because we have gotten a significant amount of money and it kind of skews and throws those budget numbers out of whack. So it's my plan continuing into the whole budget process to use coronavirus-free numbers and so we can compare apples to apples as we're going forward. 2021, this year, school year, we had $30,840,000 of budgeted revenue. We have a line item there. Our enrollment went up 255 kids. We budgeted 160. So it's 95 kids more than what we anticipated, which was unheard of. It was a huge year for us. That 95 kids represents just under $600,000 of additional revenue. So that goes into the total revenue for 2021. But my point on here is to see that that rolls into 21, 22. So we haven't spent this $575,000. It was, our budget is working on what we budgeted for. So that rolls into this year and then it rolls up to 21, 22. And then we add and subtract all the new revenues in 21, 22, that 33,460, then rolls up to 22, 23. So that's kind of how this spreadsheet, same happens with expenses too. Add and subtract all the expenses and then it rolls up to the next year. So we just build on each year. That's the point I wanted to show you there. Revenue is driven extensively by student growth and the per-student allocation. Student growth means everything in a school district anymore. In the old days, when we were experiencing those valuations, increases in valuation that I was talking about, that would have been very, very beneficial to the general fund. Today, not, no. It's all student-driven. If you don't grow in students, you don't grow in revenue, no matter how much you're growing in valuation. It's totally based on kids. We continue to project growth throughout the five-year period. That's just key to our financial future. Next year, I have us projected at 185 new kids. We'll talk about that a little later when we get into enrollment. But it's 185 next year and then approximately 150 kids per year throughout the remaining five years. The spreadsheet is very fluid. It's a weird year with all these coronavirus funds and stuff and you'll see here I have a one-time funding increase. There was $11 million that the governor allocated to school districts to disperse out to school districts through a formula that she developed. Those schools that didn't grow because of the virus and those schools that grew less because of the virus, we received, are pegged to receive $140,000. We grew in not only our normal growth, but then we grew 95. But as I told you, I'd much rather see that plus 95 than any money from the state government. That's ongoing, those 95 kids there. But my point on this, this 140,000 that we're going to get from the 11 million total allocation from the state of South Dakota, I just got word yesterday, yesterday, Friday, that that money is going to be paid in 2021, June of 2020. So it's going to meld into the management of the fund balance even more. It's becoming a big chore to manage that fund balance now with the way these funds are all moving in and out and whatnot. In addition to that, the state aid, other revenue equalization, you've heard me talk about that, that that is, the other revenues are bank franchise tax and grocery receipts taxes are all now in the formula. So you have to manage how that works in the formula. That's become problematic for us because those numbers shoot up and shoot down depending on the year and it's always a year hence. So we're trying to manage that with the state aid and how that works, but that's another area that's kind of problematic for us at Brandon Valley. Going into it, I thought, oh, this is going to be a good deal when they meld it into the state aid formula. As far as my little world of budgeting, not so much. It became more problematic. In, under the expenditure side, well, let's back up to the revenue. A lot of new revenue this year, guys. Lot. And what a great year to have, a lot of new revenue. We're opening a new school, operational costs of a new school. It's a very good year, but we have a lot of new income this year that we're expending down here. I've plugged in some numbers. These are by no means written in stone, but salary and benefits and staff comprise a huge amount of our total budget. You know, it's about 86% of our total general fund budget. Salary increases, benefit increases, early retirement costs, savings from retirees and new staff are the first half a dozen lines on there. You can see those numbers and we'll go through the whole negotiation project, but remember what I said earlier, that all of us do not pay taxes for us to put it in the bank. I mean, we try to do the best we possibly can on paying our staff and also the hiring of new staff. It's a very balancing act. It's a juggling act that we go through each and every year. So going down to the bottom line of '21, '22, I have just $466,000 of deficit spending. I'm looking at a $7.1 million fund balance at the end of this year, about 23%. Now that'll probably creep up with this 140 dumping in there and stuff. So these numbers will shift when we get to the final budget. But $466,000 of deficit spending seems like a lot, but it's not. We have to manage this fund balance and we got to get that down. We got to start driving that down, which we are, and then we snap back out of it. That's the key, snapping back out of it, that you're not in this huge hole that you're just spend, spend, spend and you never can get out of that spiral. It might be something that we could all look at at the federal level, you know, that spiral that they're in there. You get into that and you can't get out of it, you know? So you have to always watch that. But I'm very comfortable in that general fund, what we're doing. We're funding all of our salary increase benefits, new staff, and the operational costs of a new school. That's just really cool that we have all those operational costs built into this budget for 21, 22 and still manage it through that time. Any questions on the general fund? I guess I'll sum it up by, yes, we're spending a lot of fund balance, but yes, we need to in these first couple of years and then we're snapping out of it towards the end of that. And that's the key thing there. Here's the percentages on that fund balance and that's a key percentage of the total budget, expenditure budget. $7 million is 23% of $30,840,000. 6.6 is 19% of $34 million. 6.4 is 18% of $35 million. Goes down, you know, a percent or so each year. 15% is our target number as we go through. And that's where we're hitting at the end.
Questions?
I know it's a lot of information, but it's, will be beneficial information to you later on. Just continue to keep track of it. The staffing requests are on the next sheet. They kind of itemize for the new school and then district-wide. Where we're at right now, that always changes every day, so don't think too much.
Paul, do you want to touch on the enrollment increase, state increases, salary increase, benefit increases, just for information purposes at the bottom?
I was going to hold off on the enrollment when we got to that section of the thing. You can kind of see as I talked about 185 and then roughly 150, 160 throughout the rest of the years there. Our total enrollment this year, 4682, will go up to 4867 down there. State aid will be 2.4%, which is above the state mandated rate of State aid will be 2.4%, which is above the state mandated rate of 1.5%. So just about a full percentage point above what they're mandated to give us. Tough to get mad at the legislature for that. We have pegged in a salary increase number of 5% of benefits increase number of 6% and then there's our student allocation. Now, whether that comes to fruition, that 5%, I'm not going to say today that that's going to happen, but that's the largest number I've ever put in there this early in the game. I will tell you that, but I mean, I'm not going to keep anything back either. It's black and white. That's where we're at right now. Now, things can change. This benefit increase number is scheduled at 6%. I was telling Jared that I was going great with my health insurance. My utilization was just looking tremendous during COVID. I guess nobody was going to the doctor during COVID or something and it just went completely south on me here in the last couple of months where I'm paying out more than I'm taking, putting in. So and the bad thing, those guys that give you renewals, that sit in the back corner behind 4,000 cubicles, they don't like it when at the end of the year it starts going south. So I'm a little nervous about that, but it is what it is. Health insurance is not rocket science. Money goes in, money goes out. Just try to manage them in the interim there. So that's the bottom there. The next fund is a spec ed fund. That's a unique fund in that it's it's similar to the general fund. It's all driven by student count. Once again, we don't have a ton of control over the expenses, as much control, I should say, as we do in the general fund. Up above, we have state increases of the same two and a half percent, which would provide us with $150,000 of additional revenue. Now, I say additional funding from student enrollment increase, 400,000. A lot of that of that is based on the categories that these kids fall into, so it's not just student increase in student growth, it's how those kids fall in the categories. Some categories pay 20,000, some categories pay $8,000 for each kid. So depends on where those kids fall and that's where I account for those differences there. So it's not... And then in addition, when our enrollment goes up, obviously we receive more money in the special education fund too, just like the general fund. But in addition to that, it's the category spending. We have not delineated any additional staff at this at this time for spec ed fund, but I do have a budget line item in there for that and salaries the same as the general fund. Now, as we've talked previously, fund balance has been a big thing in the spec ed fund. We were down to basically nothing a couple of years ago. We have since systematically tried to get that back up. Guess what? We succeeded. That's about where we'll be at the end of the year, this year, 1.2 million dollars. Little bit of increase depending, you know, I don't know how that's all going to pan out in spec ed. Kyle can come, he can change a budget faster than anybody I know. It's... He does what he can. But you know my point. I mean, it's it's just so fluid in the spec ed fund. We try the best we can to manage that fund balance, but it's always good. Our goal was, once again, 15% and it's nice to be back up there. So when we do have significant changes, we can weather those storms through the expended expending of fund balance and whatnot. So basically the same as the general fund, per-student allocations driven by the student count. Any questions? Spec ed. Lastly is enrollment projections. I do have a couple of sheets in there that talk about the new staff we've hired for the last 15, 20 years and that's more just for me or internal purposes. It's kind of nice to see what you've done throughout the past years in new staff versus how many kids you've gone up and it's just a very good record-keeping item. The the next one is the fall enrollment history for the past 25 years. The last few years have been significant increase in enrollment. If you drop down just a little bit, you can see that our average is used to be about 3%. It's gone up over the 25-year period, it's gone up to 4%. So it's increased a whole percent due to our enrollment the last three, four years going up significantly. So that's an average yearly percent increase of 4.3% throughout the 25-year period. That's one of the items I use in projecting enrollment, obviously. History is probably one of the biggest things I use when I'm trying to project enrollment and that's the, I guess we have the building utilization chart for this next year is the next thing. With distance learning this year, it's been a different sort of animal. I mean, don't anybody take this wrong, Fred Assam looks like it's exploding, just a lot of distance learners are these, these are not the number of kids that are in the building. These are the total number of kids and it's hard to, you know, should I put just the kids that are in the building, but then I skew on the bottom there, I skew the actual enrollments to show numbers that are different than I'm reporting. So I guess treat this with the value that it's that it has and and it doesn't have that. We're fine and you can tell on the high school, obviously, we're reaching the max. Robert Bennis, we're reaching the max. That's the problems we're solving right now. Fred Assam, the new school on the south side, Robert Bennis will be aided with the new school on the east side of Sioux Falls down the line and the high school addition will be aided here. The actual enrollment projection then for the next five years. This isn't easy. And I, as I told Jared, I put myself out there a ton when I I put this in black and white and there isn't a lot of, when I send this out, these guys aren't exactly giving me a lot of suggestions when it comes to changing numbers and stuff, so. And I'm just, and I'm not saying this in a braggy way or whatever, but there are a lot of districts our size that pay what they term these demographers to come in and do this for them and pay them, oh, you don't want to know what they pay them, 30, 40, $50,000 and then they miss it by 100 kids. It just blows me away. Who knows the enrollment? I'm advantaged and the fact that I've been here, so doggone long, I guess, but who knows that enrollment better than us? History and everything's predicated on that kindergarten class. I mean, it's all driven on that kindergarten class and that's increased substantially through the last three, four years. I mean, those numbers were 300 not too long ago. Now we're 350, 360. And then falls out throughout the throughout the term of the there. My superintendent might believe that I'm a little low on my projection for next year. I feel confident in there. I guess I, in my 30 years, I've missed it, shot it too high once or twice and that really causes some consternation for for school board members when I miss it and I shoot too high, if I project 200 and it only comes in at 100, school board members get nervous, but that's why we have fund balance too, guys. So I'm at 185 next year and kind of 170, 160 throughout the remaining of the five years. Any questions on that or suggestions? I'm always open to them. And you will notice on on the year, you know, I don't get too worked up about the individual buildings. I do my projections based on the the whole elementary, you know, and I kind of flop them into the various schools. Kristen did tell me that I'm getting too many kids in the Robert Bennis here in the out in years three and I know I am. I know that, that they're, but they're going to be at some other school, obviously. If if they're all in Robert Bennis, we'll shift them to Brandon Elementary or something. We'll do something to to make that work. You can see the new school, what do I, I can't see it. I have it opening with just under 300 kids. Is that somewhat in line, Jared, what you're thinking or?
Depends on how good the summer is.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's going to be in that.
Between 220 and...
Yeah, we'll see. And then, as you can see, Fred Assam drops down considerably, 600 drops down to 375. So good to go on that that area. And the last page of that is just our fall enrollment count. Our total funding is based on this this current year. The key number is 4,682. That's with the state of South Dakota earmarks, Brandon Valley. That's our number, 4,682. They do not count our early childhood kids, but I always do. When I'm running the numbers, they take up space. Not much space, but they do take up space. Yeah, they have a classroom for them. And the la, the bottom line of that of that schedule shows the out-of-district placements total. We have 38. That includes kids that go to Teach Well. Out-of-district placements, a lot of Kyle's kids are, you know, children's home, children's care, hospitals, those those types of kids, that's what we consider out-of-district placements. 38 total of those throughout the district. That's all I had. Talked longer than I wanted to or I thought I was going to, but I I'm just very passionate. This is important stuff and I hope it's, I get it that it's it's stuff that gets boring looking at that many numbers, but it is very key to our success as a school board to manage all these monies. Because next year, it's going to be about 60 million bucks that you're going to be responsible for. So we'll continue to tweak it. I mean, like I said, this has been probably the weirdest year with all the stuff happening and, I mean, $2 million coming in for coronavirus funds and scrambling to to get invoices in on time and so on and so forth. So it's it's a very different year. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might steal two seconds. In terms of additional staffing, because that's something you will see at our next Board of Education meeting, I will bring a recommendation for general fund staffing in the amount of about 1.5 million bucks. It's relevant to note, I made a mistake when sending over my original generalization to Mr. Lundberg. The intermediate school computer that's shared with the high school, we we approved them last year, so they're already in the budget. So it's important to note that I will be substituting out that position and I'm going to be bringing forward a Brandon Valley High School Dean of Students in that slot. So that that will replace that piece. And then in terms of special education staffing, I'm going to bring forward 350 to 370,000 in additional sped staffing and you'll get all of that at our next meeting for approval. And then that will be posted internally for that one week and then kicked out externally as we work through the hiring process. So just a couple of items to note on what's coming through our process.
My heart about dropped here, guys. I looked at my clock on my computer, it says 8:15. I thought Thorson and Skipstead were, because I had no way told them that long, but it's it's an hour off, so I'm fine. You guys can't kill me now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lundberg. We appreciate it. And I know for those of us who maybe knew her on the board, looking at this book, it took me, I don't know, my whole first term or second to try to really understand and if you have any questions though, please ask Mr. Lundberg or Superintendent Larson. It's it's a good read, not as good as The Coffee Bean, but it's close. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve items two through four under General Business, please. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I would entertain a motion, please, to approve personnel items one through three as presented. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There's information only transfer. Under the communications section, there are, again, some thank you notes for various things to the Board of Education. That takes us to board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share tonight? I don't know.
We had our ASBSD executive meeting virtual on last Monday? Last Monday. Couple of things that were highlighted. One, Brandon Valley District was highlighted across the state. It's been widespread about the coffee bean. They call it the coffee bean thing. That's how it was started. But they wanted to know all the details is quite a highlight. Tell us more. Tell us who started it. How did it go? And it's making quite a headway across the state. So just kudos to every one of you and all that you put forth in that. I know that it added to every classroom, but I also know it took a lot of your time and energy. So thank you because it's making an impact, not just here in Brandon and in Valley, but across the state. And there was quite a bunch that made comments about, wow, what a great way to look at bonding together during a pandemic. So thank you for that. The other thing that was making a lot of news and headlines was the bill that Dr. Larson already brought up, not wanting to stir up one side or the other, but just wanted to bring up that our legislators legislators are getting a lot of phone calls and emails for the homeschool side. So for a group that is much smaller than perhaps those in public education, we are just urging if anyone would take the moment and the time to send a quick note to our local state legislators. That would be really, at this time, what's needed. And it's not to say that we don't support homeschoolers because we really, really do, but we just have, want to make sure that they understand why we do what we do and why we want them to be part of our school, at least part-time for funding and for just school and culture management. So if that's something you could find time for, it's going to speak volumes, at least in volume numbers. But that's really all I have for right now. I just want to pass it along.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? All right. Hearing none, it looks like that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming tonight.